Thank you. So, appreciate everyone taking time out on your Monday evening to come and participate in this work session. I think Mr. Hickey just pulled up. He said he was running a little bit late, but I just want to make sure we understand what we're here.
Kurt, do you have another one of these down?
Sure. To understand what we're here for. This is a work session, so therefore there will be no deliberation. As a board, we will not be taking any action tonight. So keep that in mind in our discussion, in your expectation as we go through this presentation by Mr. Bennett. So Ms. Stone, you've been on the board now for almost two years. You came on in the COVID era, if I'm not mistaken, and there was...
I was in my second year.
One year, starting your second year? Okay.
Starting second.
Okay, starting second.
I got four in in last September.
Okay, all right. But there were some issues, I think, with you getting your orientation training.
Yes.
That's what it was. So you missed out on that, Ms. Fowler. You just recently got appointed. And so the rest of us have gone through some training, orientation that is by the TSBA. And by state law, we have to go through training annually. And reason being, there's a lot of activity that takes place that affects the school systems. And so I understand that. But understand, orientation is something that is important. And I think from out of respect to Ms. Stone, Ms. Fowler, that reached out to Mr. Bennett and said that he had a presentation to help walk through that, bridge a gap until you have the opportunity in, I think, January to go through a full training, which you'll get credit for. So you're not getting credit tonight, but we're just trying to do this to help you as board members. And then it's... And I appreciate for the rest of you members that are here, that we, you know, support, it's not bad for all of us to review some of this, some of our roles and responsibilities. So at this time, we will turn it over to Mr. Bennett. And hopefully I've given you clarity as far as what we're hoping to cover tonight.
Absolutely. So first of all, good afternoon. It's a pleasure to meet y'all, than you and some of y'all I've seen for a good long time. What I want to do tonight is walk us through a little bit about the role of the board, not only in terms of just boardsmanship, not only in terms of the law, but also in terms of best practices. One of the interesting things, I don't... I'm not trying to lean on anybody, but I hope it's okay if I like walk around the room a little bit. And also, if you don't mind, I'm going to remove my jacket.
Absolutely. In fact, if you want to take your tie off.
No, 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 then I'm going to be able to talk.
Yeah, because I've got my t-shirt.
So one of the things that is true in every county in the state of Tennessee is that the school board is the largest single employer, is the largest recipient of public tax dollars. And without question, it serves the important purpose of training up our most important asset, which is our kids. And so when you think about the role of public education, you're employing the most people. If you own a house, or if you buy a jug of milk, or whatever it is that you're doing, your tax dollars are going to support this enormous part of local government. And every day, your kids come home, and they either talk about what they learned or about what happened. And so public education is this opportunity that we have to convey the values of our culture to the next generation. And so what that means is there's a tremendous amount of attention that's given to public education. And so people out there in the public are very concerned about what's going on during the school system. But most of the time, the public in general doesn't really know how the school system operates. Forget about what you know for just a second as school board members, before you ran into the board, and maybe even before you had kids in the system. Go back to what you remember about being in school. And ask yourself, what did the principal do all day, every day?
Handle the issues as they came up?
Handle the issues as they came up. And usually, those issues were kids, weren't they?
Yep.
And so most of it, maybe it wasn't your experience.
No, yeah.
But I think as a young adult, if you asked me what the principal did, I would have told you, well, the teachers teach, and the principals basically run the building. And they handle the kids. They handle books, buses, and bikes.
Right.
And as far as what the school board did, there's no idea what the school board did. And I would suggest that even now, there's an awful lot of that misconstruction of what the central office and the building level leadership does. There's a lot of interest about what's going on in public schools. Because again, employs a lot of people, takes a lot of tax dollars, taking care of our kids. And particularly, when you hear about the cultural war that's going on here, going on there, and whether it really is going on or not versus what we're reading about in the news, there's this high level of interest in what's going on in the system. But on the school system side, there's a tremendous amount of technical stuff. I don't know if y'all have been involved elbow deep in the budget process yet. And with TISA, there's this entire new set of things we've got to go through. But when you think about your budgeting, you've got to think about, okay, federal programs and all the conditions that are attached to federal programs. If you're thinking about special ed, you're thinking about how you have to invest in this, and how you're spending, and this has to match your spending in that, and how you can't supplant. You have to think about the implications of the public bidding statutes, all kinds of things. And we didn't talk about the education piece. We live in an era of high stakes testing, where we can debate what's being tested, whether what's being tested is actually important. But it certainly is what the government, the state and federal governments are evaluating us on, right? So there's a tremendous amount of technical stuff on this side of the table, but out there in the public, there are a lot of questions. That's where you all come in. Out here, you have the public that justifiably has questions about the school system and wants to offer input. But likewise, you have the professional apparatus over here, the superintendent, the principals, the teachers, the special educators, and the entire support system that's doing a job that's largely regulated by Nashville and DC. And they've got legitimate needs, and they've got legitimate things that they want to share with the public. That's, again, this is where the you, the board, come into life. So you've got the constituents over here, the public, and you've got constituents over here in the school system, and you're in the middle. You, the board, are elected by the public to speak the public's values into the school system, which you also, under Tennessee law, are supposed to govern the system, meaning that you have to understand what's going on and advocate for the needs of the system back to the public. It's a two-way street. And so in Tennessee, back in 1992, and I keep citing to the Education Improvement Act of 1992. And every year I say that, I realize that I'm talking to people who had no idea about public education back in 1992. So I realize that it's a blast from the past. But here's the thing. Prior to 1992, in Tennessee, when a school board was elected, they decided everything, absolutely everything. And I remember sitting with school boards until 11:00, 12:00 o'clock at night, 1:00 in the morning, while they were debating personnel assignments. This school board member would say, I'll trade you this custodian for your lunch lady. Now, I'll trade you, I'll give you the lunch lady, but I want this bus driver. And so literally, the school board made all the hiring and firing decisions for the entire system. There was a superintendent, he was an elected superintendent, but his job was basically to carry out the directions of the elected board. And the elected board made all of the personnel decisions across the entire system, all of the purchasing decisions across the entire system. And in 1992, the state of Tennessee said, you know what? This system's not working. We need more accountability, more performance-based accountability. And so we really need to leverage the professionalism of our school board administrators. But we can't leave out the fact that school boards represent constituents, and they're deeply concerned about what's going on in the system. And quite frankly, the way that the old system worked, there wasn't a lot of transparency because you had board members who would talk behind the scenes and make deals, et cetera, et cetera. I mention the old way of doing things because there's a big pull about that. There's a big pull in that direction. I bet any number of you have gotten phone calls saying, hey, can you get my kid a job? Or, hey, I'm concerned about this, what can you do about it? And so there's this pull because your constituents want you to influence the way the system operates. And so left to their own devices, any board in the state is going to find itself doing things the old way, where you're dabbling in the weeds. And so most of what I want to talk about tonight is to provide a clear understanding about the roles that the board serves, the role that the administration serves, and how you, the board members, fit in between. If you think about gears, you think about machinery in gears, when machines are new or they're well-maintained, the gears have nice, clear, well-cut teeth. And so when the gears turn, the teeth interlock. And the energy from this side of the machine transfers smoothly to this side of the machine, and the energy transfers. And the reverse is also true. As the gears turn and spin, there's a nice, smooth motion back and forth. There's no wasted energy. But if the gears start to wear down and slip, or the teeth break, then the machine doesn't run quite so well. It gets a little hot, and the energy over here doesn't transfer smoothly, and it's So y'all are the gears. Y'all are the teeth in the gear. And if you understand your roles clearly, then the energy from the public transfers smoothly into the system and vice versa. The system explains to you all how it's doing and what it needs, and its needs are advocated back to the public. Ideally, if you, the board members, are doing your job as envisioned by state law and board policy, what's going to happen is you're going to be able to speak the values of your community and the needs of your community to the administration. And the administration is going to be able to advocate to you about what it needs, and you're going to be able to take that to the county commission, to the Kiwanis Club, to SEVATAN, or just somebody down at the COO. There's a back-and-forth transfer of information with things you're working on. So let's talk about that. In your packet, the first thing I think you're going to find is Policy 1101. This, by the way, is awesome. 1101, this is the role of the board of education. Of course, y'all are members of the TSBA Policy Service, but more to the point, you are created by the General Assembly. The boards in the state haven't been created by the county commission or by any kind of local private act. You're actually created by the General Assembly. And so these roles here are actually spelled out as part of state law. So let me ask you to take a look at line one, first of all. "The board will oversee the operation of the school district in compliance with state and federal laws." Your policy says straight up front, "The board will oversee the operation of the school district in compliance with state and federal law." Digging into that, we see the general responsibility to develop and adopt a strategic plan in consultation with the director of schools, to adopt all policies required by the state or federal law, to approve schools on, to approve the district calendar, to approve the district safety plans, to bring the closure facilities if needed, to approve an insurance provider, and to pre-medify the agenda at the beginning of the board meetings. So you look at this. This is like a general oversight of the system as a whole. What you don't see here is handle personnel matters. What you don't see here is to handle individual decisions regarding purchasing. Although y'all are the fiscal agent for the system, most of that, y'all push down to your director. What you're looking at here, honestly, is... Whoops. All right. I bragged on him and decided to argue with him. It's big-picture stuff. You're overseeing the operations. These two things right here are some of the most important things that you do. And we're going to talk more about line five, number one, as the night progresses. "To develop and adopt a strategic plan in consultation with the director of schools." Again, y'all are a governance board. You're not an operations board. You govern. And so, yeah, the professional educators understand the pedagogy. The professional educators understand what they need to do to try to close achievement gaps. If you look at the data in every district across the state, you'll see data for white kids, for students with disabilities, and for non-white kids broken down, however they break down in your district. And in most districts, there's an achievement gap. It's your director's job to figure out, how do we close those achievement gaps? For all of your kids, you're looking at growth and proficiency. And no district in the state are we hitting where we need to be hitting. It's your director's job to figure out how to grow the proficiency of the system. And so he's supposed to develop a strategic plan, talk with you about it, and then you, the board, adopt it, based upon your understanding of what your constituents want and need, and your understanding of what the administration needs from you to move the whole system forward. We'll talk more about this later, but I'll bet you a chubby donut that you're probably not leaning into this role as much as you could be, much less as much as you should React to that.
Correct. A million percent.
Huh?
A million percent.
And I would suggest that for most boards, I only know one board that ever did this really well, and they did it for like three years, and they've got a really, really, really good director who they trusted. And then the director just kind of took off with things and did great, but the board kind of put it out and said, we'll set it and forget it. And that's especially where a board needs to be involved, is when things are going great because you want to plan for the five years from now, 10 years from now. You got grandkids?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all right.
I do.
You got grandkids? Okay. How old are your grandkids?
16, 13, four, and two.
Okay. That two-year-old, do you want your two-year-old to come back and live in White County?
My two-year-old is going to stay in White County.
Okay.
And so is the rest of them.
So you want them to have jobs that they can come back to? And so your window is, okay, in 20 years, what's White County going to look like? And are we preparing my grandkids for a future so they can stay in White County?
Exactly.
This is exactly what the board's supposed to be doing, is focusing on strategic, long-reaching issues, not day-to-day operations. The temptation, because the phone calls you get, I'll guarantee you, aren't about... I forgot your name already.
Sherry.
Sherry. All right. I'll guarantee you, the phone calls that you're getting aren't, Ms. Sherry, where's my, what job is my grandkid going to have in 20 years? It's about something that's happened this week, right? And it's because, so our constituents pull us into the now when we need to be thinking about tomorrow. And that's the tension that all of you board members face, which you've got policies that just guide your dreams. You look like you have a question, or you're about to throw something at me?
I'm going to throw something. I'm good.
All right, let's keep going. So board policy casts a vision here where y'all ought to be freed up from thinking about the day-to-day, so that instead of thinking about the day-to-day, you're thinking about Board policy and state law, board policy says this is what you're going to do, develop and adopt a strategic plan, adopt all policies, et cetera, et cetera. And all these other things, by the way, are in keeping with the strategic issues I'm talking about. They're executing the strategic issues. And so most of what I'm going to talk about tonight is encouraging you to resist the pull of day-to-day operations and instead cast a vision. And so it doesn't matter who's sitting in this chair. It could be Mr. D, it could be his successor. What I want you to be thinking about is, 10 years from now, what is your county going to look like? And that vision has nothing to do with who's here today. It has anything to do with who your colleagues are, whether y'all are going to be here today or next week or next election cycle. All right, move on. Next policy I want you to take a look at is...
Which I think, several years ago, we did a really good job of that. I mean, this is my 10th year on the board, and we did a really good job of creating a five-year plan. And then COVID happened, and all that ESRA money came in, and now our five-year plan is pretty much nonexistent because the ESRA money, I mean, I know we have one, but it's, we've taken care of a lot of those problems, you know? A lot of those issues, like we talked about when we came in, the roof here, you know, adding on to Bondi Croft, putting the air conditioners in every gym, you know, things that needed to be done and needed to be done five or six years ago, that all of a sudden, boom, the government says, here, here you go.
Here you go.
We're going to take care of that. So like you said, we need to be worried about the next five to 10 years, and who's going to be sitting in my seat or any seat in this house.
And I would, so I'm going to lean on that just a little bit. So it's certainly important that the facilities side of things figure into your plan. Because you've got to have more than adequate facilities. You have to have excellent facilities that will exist to provide the education that you want.
Absolutely.
And so to the extent that you may be looking at an investment 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 20 years from now, that's a strategic decision. Like, how are we going to, what's the funding source 10 years out? So that can be a strategic decision, but at some level, like replacing a roof is an operational decision. You have to get that roof. So you're exactly right. There's a lot of stuff that's happened that's good, that's important, and had to get done. But even there, the temptation is, okay, we've got the ESRA money. The strategic side of that is, how do we invest in property, plant, and equipment that will give you a competitive edge over DeKalb County, or over Vambeur County, or some other county, that maybe decides to take that money and invest it in a state-of-the-art CTE program? See what I'm saying? So operations and strategy sometimes overlap. I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So let's look now, next one, 2012.
Go to, scroll back up. Oh, you got it. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were going to...
I'm all here. All right. So here's another policy that y'all adopted, and it's the boardsmanship code of conduct. We used to call this boardsmanship ethics, but when the General Assembly adopted a statewide ethics policy, that dealt with financial issues, TSB changed this from ethics to code of conduct. And the main thing about this is, this is aspirational. It's what do you, as a board member, aspire to be? What do you, collectively as the board, aspire to do? It's not something that you're going to get ousted for if you don't do this, but rather it's a policy that this board has adopted as a reminder to itself, this is what our J O B really is. This is what we are called to do instead of some of the other things. Okay? And so breaking this down, if you look at line 40, these are some things that are good ideas. You think about your relationship to the kids, you have a children-first approach. You seek to provide equal educational opportunities for all students. These things are always good ideas. But then one of the questions that you need to think about when you're making strategic decisions is, okay, if I'm going to put a child, if I'm going to have a child-first approach, how does that inform things like, how do we staff schools? Do we need to have, there's increasingly some data that the kids with behavioral problems need maybe a couple of adults in the classroom. Do you start moving towards a team teaching model that has been advocated in other states for a while? Tennessee's been very resistant to doing it. We don't have a lot of money compared to other states. You know why we're the volunteer state? Because Nashville doesn't pay for much. So, but if our focus here is on child first, then it may mean that as we're making strategic decisions down the road, we need to start thinking about, all right, how does this affect student learning? How does this affect student behavioral issues? And I promise you, there's one trend that I've been seeing around this state, and it's funny to me. It literally started on the county's border in North Carolina in the mountains, but it's been moving west steadily for the last five years. It's behavioral issues. Kids, I don't know, somebody, there was apparently some decision at one point where people decided to stop raising their kids, and they put it on us to do it. And it's not simply that this kid doesn't know any better. Some of these kids are coming in unhinged.
Damaged.
Yeah. And I don't know if it's something that's prenatal. I don't know if it's because they're gaming all the time. I don't know if there's a new trick. I don't know what it is. But one thing I can say definitively is, no one's got a handle on how to fix it. And so one of the things I've been advocating for boards to do is to start thinking about the behavioral components of the education program. Because most of us sitting around this table succeeded under the old system. We behaved. We did listen. But we need to make policy for people who weren't like us. Does that make sense? It's kind of a weird thing, because policy is written by people who succeeded under the old system. So it's viscerally difficult for us to think about the people who aren't sitting around this table with us. Because we succeeded, they should be able to. They're not. And again, if there's a trend that I'm seeing is that kids are coming to school behaviorally damaged. Did you say damaged or broken? Either way.
Damaged.
Either way, we're seeing the issue. I will seek to provide equal educational opportunities for all children. That includes those kids who are damaged. It includes kids who have special needs. And that portion of your population is going to climb year by year by year. And so if your district is going to move forward and achieve the performance goals that the state says you need to achieve, you've got to bring up the rear. You can't leave anybody behind. So boardsmanship requires you to think about the big picture. Good boardsmanship is going to advocate for these issues so that you can help the system move forward.
I want to say something right there. You're talking about the behavioral component of our educational system. I want to brag on Mr. D, and I think he's done a really good job in advocating for our behavioral students with the behavioral class that we have at Finley, and now the new behavioral class that we have at the middle school. I think, I mean, you talk to those people who are in those classes and are there every day, it's making a difference. I mean, the fact that we have invested money into those things, and put people who are trained and qualified in those positions to work with those kids who have behavioral issues, because you said, like you said, we grew up, and we didn't have those issues. We weren't drug dependent. We weren't drug dependent. We weren't...
You got in trouble. Parents took care of it at the house.
Parents took care of it. I mean, if I got a whipping at school, when I got home, my dad knew about it. Parents took care of it, I mean, if I got a whipping at school, when I got home, my dad knew about it before I got home. And I got another one when I got home.
Because you have various family.
That's exactly right. But I think we've done a good job at advocating for those students that have negative-
And I'll take this, I saw your hand, and just a second, I'll take this step further. We have an excellent relationship with the White County Sheriff's Department. Better than any district I represent, represent 20 districts in middle and east Tennessee. White County has the best relationship with the Sheriff's Department that I know about.
It's not come easy, hasn't Mr. D.
We do have a good relationship.
But here's the thing.
We have a very good relationship.
And I think y'all are recording, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be specific. But we had some challenges this past year, where we had to get creative to address them issues with some baling wire and duct tape. And we did. And, we had the support of the Sheriff's Department, they were phenomenal. But, this is one of these years where we can't rest on our laurels, because these kids, where we are now with the behavior program, these kids will either come back into what I'll call the gen ed setting, or they're gonna stay there for, in the behavior setting for a while. And most of us, our behavior program is intended to be a short-term fix. And I don't know that that's necessarily a realistic outlook. You got a question?
Well, like you say, this, kids that need to stay in there long-term, you know, I understand that. But these that need in there for a quick fix, most of it is consequences to their bad behavior. They've took a lot of the consequences out of everything, so it don't matter if they misbehave. So, no big deal, I'll have to go and I S S for a day or two. Who are used to, like you say, they got spankings at home, they got in trouble at home, but it's like nobody has any consequences to anything.
Well, and in fact, when you're looking at the discipline laws, Mr. D's hands are tied in large measure by the state laws, because the state law presumes kids entitled to education, we gotta give a kid education. If the child has a behavioral disability, then you've got another layer of protections. And so, I'm implied, honestly, this is one of those areas where you all have got to educate yourself about the challenges, so that you can advocate to the county commission, or to other groups. Maybe it's the Boy Scouts, maybe it's the Girl Scouts, maybe it's church youth groups, maybe it's whoever. Because it's grossly unfair for the public to expect the school system to raise the kids. When you think about it, we have them six and a half hours a day, 180 days a year. The rest of the time, they're somewhere else. Everyone worries about the things people learn at school, but something like, you know, do the math. How much time are they spent, are they spending somewhere else? That's where you, as board members, need to advocate to the community, that they need to partner with us to address these issues.
Right, you said, these kids that have disabilities with their behavior, that's a totally different. But a lot of, a lot of the problem now is, it's just bad behavior because they want to. And like you say, and just see what they get by and push the limits, because basically, they think the consequences aren't that bad.
Can I ask one quick question? Do you think we're gonna have the ability from federal law to navigate interstate? Are they gonna take, are they gonna take all this away from us? I mean, are they gonna step in and say-
It's too big a problem. Now, the federal, you know, the federal government, if anything, is, I think, gonna try to get the states to handle more of this, just because the federal government will fund stuff. But in terms of owning the outcome, no, they won't do that. It's too big of a, too big of a ball of wax. All right, pushing on. These next six things talk about your relationship with the community, and these are good ideas. You look at the present and future educational needs, represent the school community as a whole, not special interests or partisan politics. Keep the community informed about the progress and needs of the school. That's one of those things that y'all are uniquely able to do. If, if Mr. Drunbarber goes to the county commission, they know he's asking for money. Right? If he goes out into the community, they know he's talking about the school system's party line. Y'all are uniquely qualified because of who you are, and the communities from which you were elected, and the churches you go to, and the clubs you're part, et cetera, to go in and say, well, you heard about this, let me tell you the rest of the story. You've heard about this problem, let me tell you what we need to address that problem. Y'all are uniquely situated, and I think at least one of y'all was recently appointed by the county commission to fill a vacancy. Okay, so you've got the ears from county commissioners where you can say, let me tell you, let me tell you something I just learned. Let me tell you what we need. We're talking about the gears and the machinery, both sides have to spin. So the public has to have input, the public also has to be receptive to what's going on over here. The administration has to be receptive to the public input, but you also have to advocate. And your role in the middle is, you know, y'all are the teeth in those two claws. I will represent the board and the school district to the public in such a way as to promote both interest and support. That's a great idea, because otherwise, why'd you run for school board? You're spending an awful lot of time and energy for something if you're not willing to advocate for the board, for the school system. I will serve as a guardian of public's trust and prioritize the interests of my community. As, as an elected official, that's what you do. There's a certain integrity that you bring to the process, out of respect for the fact that your constituents elected you. So those are good ideas. Good policy, meaning it's a good way to do business, turn line 24. I will support the employment of those best qualified service employees and insist on regular and partial evaluation. I will support and protect personnel in accordance with their duties. That's a big thing, because I don't know about, most of you probably, you know, know teachers, maybe some of you were teachers. But right now, the morale in the teaching ranks is an all-time low. We have fewer and fewer and fewer people going into the education profession. I'm familiar with the number in Hamilton County. If I'm, if I'm remembering correctly, something like 30% of all the teachers in Hamilton County are within five years of being eligible for term. I doubt that that's unusual. I doubt that that's unusual. If you look around this state, our teaching cadre is aging, and we're not replacing them fast enough. And so, teachers know whether they're being a supporter or not. That is one of the most vital roles that you, as a board, have, is advocating for your teachers and supporting your teachers. Because you can coach up a teacher, but it's really hard to work through replacement right now.
How close do you think we are, Mr. D, to that number of 30%?
I'd say it's pretty accurate.
I'd say, that's what I was thinking.
I don't, yeah, I don't know offhand, but I would, I'd imagine just-
Yeah, just from the looks of our teaching staff, we're close to that 30%.
Yeah, and so, if they did that, so you asked your question, who's in the pipeline? Who's in the pipeline? And that's also a strategic issue for you, the board, to think about. How do you compete with, I don't know, Putnam County? You know, Cookville's there, University's there, not that it's necessarily like the place you wanna be. A lot of young people wanna be in the Nashville area. So how do you compete with the Nashville area? What do you have to offer? And so, a lot of the times, when you are trying to sell the system, you also need to be selling the community. Did the heat cut on in here?
I turned it off, it was loud, I can turn it back on.
I'm sweating. I mean, I'm dying.
I'm comfortable.
I do have a little blanket out.
This is another one of your policies, is that when criticized employees publicly will express any relevant concerns of the very school coordination and action. Then this, this piece off of the book we already talked about, but it also recognizes that you, the board, have exactly one employee. You, the board, have exactly one employee, and it's this guy right here. Everybody else wants for him. And so, your policy wants to be accountable, but your policy also wants to be a chain of command, and a reflection of the fact that there's some things that are important, and there's some things that are best delegated to him. Make sense?
Anytime I get a call like that, I say, have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? If both of those are yes, and they didn't get what they want, then I say, you need to call this number right here.
Yeah, and it's probably his number.
And it's his number.
And actually, this last one, it's not just a good idea. What I'm about to talk about now, I believe, is basically just a law. But, right here, starting with 139, going down to here, there's some really strong legal reasons for following the policy. Here, when a board member starts to get involved in individual personnel matters, you create for yourself a conflict of interest. Here's why. As, as the board, you sit as the ultimate decision-making authority. It's a parent employee who has maybe run afoul of policy or state law, or done something that is disciplinary bold. If you get involved in it, well, he or she can appeal to the board. And you, because you have gotten involved, you now have a conflict of interest, and you have to recuse yourself from the vote. Now, that may not seem like a big deal. But there's a certain number of constituents who elected you. And so, if you have to recuse yourself from a vote, because you got involved in a personnel issue, you have to bribe your constituents of any representation in what is otherwise an important decision. Is that about that? So, there's actually a boardsmanship ethics issue, I will use it in this context. Because ethically, if you know about an unemployment situation, if you're involved in an unemployment situation, if you made a phone call, or sent an email, or done anything like that, if it comes before you in an official capacity, you may have to. And then, people who elected you don't have a say now. But also, other legal considerations. Individual board members have exactly how much authority? Zero. In Tennessee law, an individual board member has exactly zero authority. The only authority you have is when you were convened in a properly-named meeting here at this table, and you're acting in concert. Now, there's a good news about that, and I'll talk about it in a little bit. But individual board members don't make decisions, the board makes a decision. And when the board makes a decision, the board made a decision. And because of that, what it means is, you gotta work together. Not only is that good policy, but that is actually state law. It's not that a majority of the board decided to do this. No, the board decided to do this, by majority vote, but the board made a decision. What we have fundamentally here is, because Tennessee has adopted sort of the old corporate board and directors model, where a corporate board decides large, far-ranging issues, but delegates to their CEO the running of the system. And so, if you think about your director as your CEO, what we have here are best practices. Full administrative authority, as long as you're responsible with the director of the department, or all the faculty leaders. That's the job. You hire him to do his job, empower him to do his job, and then expect him to do his job. How do you expect him to do his job?
Professionally?
Not professionally. Professionally, how do you gauge that?
On our evaluation.
On your evaluation, that's right. So you hold it cognitively. The board sets the standards for the school system, the policy, but I will also suggest that you do it through the evaluation process. You establish specific goals and objectives. Not specifics, not in the weeds, but specific goals and objectives for him. As part of the planning process, and the judge, did he do it or not? And if you hear anything out of the weeds, "I don't like this, I don't like that", your role as a board member is to say, okay, like you just said, have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to the director? Because maybe it's time that y'all get out of the lane. At a minimum, the tape on the window here is to start to wear down, and you get sluggish, when you build up heat, and maybe the whole thing works, at a minimum. But also, to get out of your lane, reduce natural legal problems with it, which we're talking about right now. So, there's a specific code section in Tennessee law. It's part of Tennessee governmental tort liability act. It sounds like a mouthful, I'll tell you where it is. So, in Tennessee, we adhere to the old doctrine of sovereign immunity. We used to say, back in the day, that the king can do no wrong. It's the king's court, king can do no wrong. And so, if the government made a mistake, we'd be tough enough. When the United States was formed, we kept that basic principle, that the government can't do anything wrong, because you gotta have a government. Limited government, limited authority, you gotta have a government, and they can't do everything, they can't control everything. As part of that system, we, our Children's Assembly, as early as 1796, said we seek sovereign immunity, but we will pull back that curtain a little bit to let individuals file lawsuits if they've been damaged by the ordinary negligence of the government officials. So, back in the day, if a sheriff's chasing down a bandit, and he's running recklessly on his horse, through a crowded marketplace, he runs over somebody, we're gonna say, sheriff, you shouldn't have been doing that, you knew it was a crowded marketplace. Yeah, you're chasing a bandit, but you run your horse, and you lead him to run somewhere, and the sheriff will be like, so there's limited stop, limited removal of that sovereign immunity. So today, move forward, we have two hundred or something here. School system official makes him say, "Please, you're on the floor, please slip the balls, crack his head." Did you know that that was fair? "Yeah, I did, I was gonna get run and doing it, but I got wet, and I went out of bounds." "Absolutely, you were negligent, we're now gonna, we'll figure out what you are." Another, another exception to sovereign immunity though, is when a government official does something on purpose, like a willful, intentional act. Says something bad about somebody, defames them, something like that, intentional act. When that happens, there's individuals not acting as an agent of the government, they're acting on their own. And there's such a problem on the ground, they can be sued on their own. Let me tell you this. Because one of those specific statutes, you can do a right-hand look at it, you can't, but you can't have to, is TCH 20-9, dash 20, dash 201, B 2. And that's not, but here's my match to you here. When you, the board members, are sitting here in this room, at a meeting, you are immune from safety. You're immune, because state law recognizes that representative government doesn't work, but you don't have representative influence, like you are. Right? If there was not gonna-
Oh no, I've got a bug fest, I gotta fly right, I'm getting a bug. It's a bug, it's me, not me.
She had the specialty, her, her- So, when you're sitting here around the table, and you're convened out of board meeting, and you, as board members, are acting together in concert- as board members, are acting together in concert, you are immune from suing. You can make a bad decision. We're going to, we're going to move from diesel buses to propane buses. The next school year, all propane buses break down against any school public suit, because, you know, they're mad. Y'all, individual are immune from suing.
Because we made a decision as a board.
As a board, that's right, that's right. The General Assembly says, representation of local boards is vital to our system of government, and so individual board members acting together as a board and a board meeting are generally immune from suing. Generally, so they're acting willfully, voluntarily, or for personal financial gain, you can get sued. So, but that's easy, I mean, I don't need to grant your school board for personal financial gain. So, don't vote yourself any contracts, don't vote any kid if you have any contracts. Avoid the financial pitfalls. And then, as long as when you're meeting, you're not defaming somebody, protect it. So the good news is, there's a lot of stuff in the law, policy, etc., that you can do. But generally speaking, if you're only acting here in order, and if you're acting in good faith, protect it. You're not going to get sued. That's the fourth point, because everyone's like, some of these people swear, like every couple of months, you have some, remember Paul. You don't have to some during COVID. You have somebody who says, "I'm going to sue very well to you because you're doing excellent things." And during COVID, the president said, "Gellar contract medicine, by the way, you've got required that I mandate and that, and we sue you." And I got lots of questions, can they sue us? One of my senior partners, a long time ago, used to say, "If you're willing to pay filing a fee, you can sue the Pope of the Trinity, but you're not going to crack." Right? So someone could sue you, but it's going to get dismissed right away. Because again, if you're sitting at this table, if you're probably interested in acting in good faith, staying in your lane, you're basically immune from suing. So take that far, and just do your job. Be fearless, and act in good faith, and you're going to get that. Okay. What I want to do now is I want to take a minute, and I'm going to talk about, you see that stretch? Sure. I have a question that
All right, fine. Sure.
All right, yeah. Take a minute.
I really have, just want to figure it out.
... Um. Well, here we are. The emphasis of the EIA is here on the director of schools. Which is creating this new office of director of schools and the whole point here is to be supposed to be equipped to do things that the board has elaborately worked on and decided is a priority for the system. Based upon listening to him and his staff, how you would educationally are, and listening to the community and understanding the long-term needs of the community, back to your grandchildren. So, you're out in the community and you're thinking, okay, what is my grandchild doing to? You don't have to be an educator. What is your background, by the way?
Mine?
Yes, ma'am.
I own FedEx Ground.
Okay, so you're a businesswoman. Okay, so, so, you know, your business in particular depends on commerce. People have to be buying things and selling things. And it is a service industry. So it gives you a unique perspective to look and think, okay, is my grandchild going to be doing something like this? Or is my industry changing fast enough that, that we're reacting to it? So you could be asking yourself the question, how can we aim downhill? You know, aim down, down the field? And so that's where you ask questions of your director, what are we doing? And then in workshops, you ask questions of your colleagues, what are we doing? And when you're talking to your county commissioner then, you say, you're worried about maintaining a good low tax base, good for you. But what are we doing for the people who'll be moving here in 20 years? Or alternatively, the people who are going to decide whether to stay here in 20 years.
And not move to a bigger city.
And not move to a bigger city. These are questions that the board needs to be asking. And collaboration with the director. So now we do move to a policy 11 of the state. I'm very limited on that. In a particular, we come back to line five. It's your responsibility to develop and adopt a strategic plan in consultation with director of schools. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you that, again, I represent a lot of school systems. And every director has basically the same problem. How do you keep your school staff and high-quality people when here you are, you're at the end of the first nine weeks, and you've got these vacancies, and you're getting worried about this over here? How do you keep them staffed? What about the new things coming down from the state? There's always something new coming down from the state.
I got it.
There's always something new coming down from the state. And so, most of the time, your director, when he's thinking about strategic issues, he's thinking about next year's budget. Because that's the time, that's, that's the window he has. Really good directors, and I, and I talked to Mr. D about this last spring, are thinking three years out. Like, what do I need to ask for now? What do I need to get a place now so that three years from now I'll have X? It takes a phenomenal director to have that 20-year plan. Talk about five-year plans, but again, a five-year plan doesn't let your grandkid have a job there, does it? It doesn't. Can you legitimately expect your director to have a 20-year plan and still maintain good focus on the day-to-day operation of the school system? No. He can engage in a conversation with you, but it's fundamentally the job of you folks to think about the future of the school system and let him worry about today. So. Also, we look at line 12 as well. Um, that's not right.
There's another word.
Uh, I know where it is. Yeah, yeah, it's the mid-page. Employee evaluation of the director of schools. So you get a job to develop your strategic plan in your job. Just employee to evaluate the director's performance on page, on the second page, line 12, like a fine period. So here's how those two things meet. Most of the time, when you are being asked to evaluate your director, if you look at the, at the model policy, the model evaluation form is developed by TOS, since the organization of schools and districts. And that's typically the one that most districts follow. What you're looking at is, does he communicate well with the board? That's important. Uh, how is he viewed in the district? Well, that's important. Is he a good dresser? That's actually on your, on your, on your evaluation form. Is he a good dresser? And, and, and I, I think he's, that's a very nice outfit. Don't y'all agree? I think it's a very nice tie. It matches perfectly with his outfit. Right?
Very put together.
Very put together.
His walk is.
I was gonna say, they really did.
Your animals.
Your animals.
Your animals. How does that help your grandson have a job in 20 years? Forget 20 years. How does that help him get ready for college? Or if he doesn't go to college, how does that help him become career-ready? The tension that most school boards have is, in advance of every single meeting, you've got people who are asking you, hey, what, what, I heard that something happened at Finley the other day. What's going on with this? Hey, you know, there's this, there's a line item on your budget. I don't understand anything about your budget, you know, with facility maintenance. There are 100 things that are important, but none of them play into the, the role that only this board can do, which is to plan for the future. That is your J O B. And what you need to be asking yourself is, if this doesn't help my grandson get a job, why are we wasting time thinking about this? Your board meetings should be focused around, you know, the consent agenda, okay, approved, yeah, yeah, approved. And if there's something you don't understand, and, and you've talked, you, you haven't been able to talk with them before the meeting, to find out your clarification, then you pull and you ask about it. But your board meetings should be focused on things that only the board can do, which is this high-level stuff. And so, when y'all make a strategic plan, that's how you're evaluating the director. He's a snappy dresser, but that doesn't matter to your grandson in two decades. It doesn't matter to the industry that's trying to decide, okay, we want to come to White County, it's a great place, good people, hard work ethic, but doggone it. We don't have a workforce that's able to do this job. What are we gonna do? Well, you know what? We can go down the road to Putnam County. They've got more people. They've got a better trained workforce. Yeah. So there's a high level of questions that you all can be asking, and talking to county commissioners, and talking to business and workforce development people, and, and you could even partner with TSBA, they have a tremendous, um, resource of, of the jobs that are on the horizon 10 years from now, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, to help you kind of figure out whether you're aiming behind your target. Because most of us are. We're, we're, we're trying to train our kids for jobs that won't exist when they graduate. So, I would suggest that what we're talking about here is a better way of doing things. If you look at your, and I'm looking at, at 5803.
Well, I put them in the order in which he had asked the duplicates in there. So if you keep going through your package, 5803 is in there.
Okay, well, I've got two boarding chips coming.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, because I knew once you have to turn back to the front.
Okay, I, I was, I was just confused.
Oh, okay, well.
I was trying to make it easy for you, but, but not, not, uh, typically, I made it a little hard.
We got it.
Yeah, that's okay, I can see.
Which is to tell me that y'all had an unlimited paper budget, and I've got to take care of that.
That's right.
All right. So if you look at five through nine, the board will develop with the director a set of performance objectives based on the needs of the system. The performance of the director will be reviewed according to these specified goals. So, here's your question. For the next evaluation cycle, I think y'all just did, uh, Mr. D's evaluation, is that right? Or less recently? Okay. So, was that evaluation based upon, agreed upon performance objectives that were tied directly to the needs of the system? No, because very few boards do this. You're supposed to do this, but very few boards do this because it's hard work. But I would suggest it's the only job you really have. Your only job is to evaluate him based upon criteria that you think move the system into whatever it's supposed to be three years from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now. And so, your board meetings need to be spent during, during this time part of the year, coming up with what your performance objectives for him need to be. You can figure out, well, what is our strategic plan? What are, what are the five things that we need to pursue and achieve to be successful 15, 20 years from now? And then based upon that long-term vision, you need to develop objectives that you want him to hit this year. And these can be legitimate objectives that, that maybe take two or three years to, to achieve. But anything further than that, quite honestly, it, it becomes too squishy, too hard to measure. And so maybe one of your objectives, because you want to increase career and college readiness, is you want to increase your ACT score from here to here. Maybe you want to increase proficiency of, of third grade lea- reading from here to here. And so those are his objectives. And so then he burdens that objective, tells you, here's what I need from you. If you want me to achieve this goal, here's what I need from you. We need to, to invest in pre-K literacy. If you want to increase third grade literacy, when you invest in, in pre-K literacy. If we're going to address some of these behavioral issues, we need to, to build on our behavior program, whatever they may be. But the point here is, most of your conversations around this table don't need to be about the day-to-day, whatever happened in school this week. It needs to be, what's gonna happen in school a few years from now? And you, and you people are the only ones who can have this conversation. Because he works for you. You folks are the only one who have the legal authority to tell him, all right, for three years, this is where we want to be. What do you think is a, is a measurable annual objective for us to get there? Okay, all right. 10 years from now, this is where we want to be. What do you think is a measure? Okay. And then, after you agree on these objectives, you review his performance in accordance with these specified goals. I'm not making this up, this is in the policy y'all have adopted. It's a pretty good idea, isn't it? Isn't this how, how corporate, how corporations work? Or should work? How the successful ones work? No one, the, the, the board of directors at Coca-Cola doesn't really care about packaging for Coca-Cola. They want Coca-Cola to increase market share. They want Coca-Cola to succeed financially. They leave it to the chairman, well, to the CEO to execute the vision. The performance objectives will be memorialized in an evaluation plan that includes at a minimum sections regarding job performance, student achievement, relationship with staff and personnel, relationships with da-da-da-da-da. And I'm just going to say, these things right here, relationship with community is important, but that's hard to measure. I don't know that I would actually put that into, and, and I might take that out of your policy, because it's very difficult to measure objectively what his relationship with the community is. Because his relationship with the community is not his job.
True.
It's your job.
Absolutely.
Right? Okay. Line 20, same thing. So, all documentation. When you evaluate him, your documentation should be supported by objective evidence, which is why I'm saying, you can't really even measure the community. Well, okay, they like him. My finger's colder than it was last year. They like him. I think what you do is, you develop that plan, you develop objectives, and you decide how you're going to evaluate him on the basis of those objectives. If he's a great dresser, that's great. If people at the co-op like him, that's great too. But ultimately, he's going to move the system forward. And so, by the way, this is how your meetings change. Once you, uh, develop, once you develop this plan, these objective criteria for evaluating him, your meetings through the rest of the year, let's, let's say you've got five performance objectives that, that you want him to pursue. The first meeting is about objective number one, where he says, this is what I heard you say, did I get that right? This is what you want me to do? Okay. All right, based on that, here's what I propose to do, and here's how this is going to affect our budget for this upcoming year. And based upon that, this is what I need from y'all. And it may be, he needs you to roll up your sleeves and get in there and advocate. Or he says, I'm gonna go to the county commission, I appreciate seeing y'all come with me. Or go to lunch with county commissioners. My point is, for him to be as effective as he can be, you all need to be thinking about your role as being more visionary. We're not focusing on what happened at my school this week, we're thinking about what's going on out in the community, and how do I leverage that so the system can move forward? Now. Quick look. Nope. Sorry, I was just 1701, I'm gonna get my slide. Why don't you call me out? I'm just gonna tell you. All right.
I was with you though, I was ready to jump there next.
All right, 1701, so, uh, line's eight. Eight thirteen. So this is, this is a pretty old policy. So. The board shall develop annual plans with specific goals to improve student performance and then operationalize in districts five and near complete. The board shall plan annual retreat during the schedule for each staff, person or group shall be to review progress. Well, I'm gonna say that's a deep dive, yes.
Can you talk about that? Is that something I think that we've done, or that we've done before as far as we speak? Can you tell me what that looks like?
Sure.
I mean, other districts, I mean, I hear other districts talking about that, so, do they officially go somewhere? And is that a board meeting? Is that recorded? I mean, how does that all work?
So you can go out of town, as long as you get notice, you can go out of town, go to, um, Baltimore State Park, go to, get a room, go to Chattanooga, and then get a room over at your house. Um, so you, you can go out of town, but.
Where are you doing here?
The purpose here is, it's a deep dive into maybe vision casket, depending on where you are in this cycle. So, so one of the things.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, I think. So used to, when, when I first started on this board, Miss Trout was, was director of schools. And every year at convention, we would, we've done that a couple of times here, but every year, she would find us a, an empty room or an empty hallway, and we would say, we're gonna have a board strategic planning period, uh, at the Opera Land Hotel on this date at this time, and, and make it public. And then we would all sit around, like we're doing right here, and we would all talk about the vision of what the school was gonna do in the next year, or the next three months or whatever. So that, and that might be where you were going with that.
That's, that's where I'm going-ish. So some of this depends on where you are in the planning cycle. So, if you have a known one in a while, then maybe where you are is you do, are y'all familiar with SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunity targets? And so, or threats, anything you wanna do. And so, so one of the things that I do when I, when I'm leading the boards in this, is I start asking questions, okay, what is it that, that the board, not, not, not the system, what does the board do really, really, really well? I guess that question. All right. What are some things that the system needs to focus on in the next five years? Third thing is, what can you do to leverage the board's strengths to address the needs of the system? And so, you start looking at, at that, and so you develop from their, your long-term goals, and then an action plan to bake into it. So the first time you do that, that may be all you're doing for two days. That'd be all you're doing for two days. And that's, as a, for instance, one of, one of our clients literally went from the lowest performing district in the state to the second highest performing district in the state in three years, just doing this analysis. Uh, and it was a big shift to turn. So if you look at these things right here, specific goals, annual retreat, review the progress, now I'm gonna suggest to you that your board meetings should be about reviewing the progress. Because your board meetings should be about the plan. And this isn't always the deep-level dive that you would do in a strategic planning session, but, so chairman and, and, and director, as the executive committee, when y'all develop your agenda, a tremendous amount of the agenda needs to be focused on this kind of high-level thinking. When you're getting, yes, you're doing the, the, the periphery business updates, but most of this stuff needs to be about letting the people know that you're thinking about tomorrow, not just limping through the quarter. And so much of what would, and, and I'm, I'm not being critical of anybody, after COVID, we've been in a survival mode. We're in a survival mode. I was on the phone with directors during the COVID times from, you know, from 1:00 to 1:00 in the morning, about trying to figure out how we were gonna provide special ed services. I mean, it's just, and everybody's giving a curve. But the point here is, re-progress, which goals have been achieved, and whether new efforts are necessary, any major issues affecting schools is entered, and then you can tweak your plan. So you develop a plan, you talk about your plan, you evaluate your plan, and then you tweak your plan as necessary. The plan is a living, breathing document. So here's the problem. Does this sound good? Does this sound great? Here's the problem. This is the White County Policy 1700, and this is issued January 27th, okay? It's your policy. These are your school district goals. The board's adopted four goals in four primary areas, infrastructure, personalization, operations. You see that? You see this? How many of y'all are familiar with that? Sort of kind of? Here's the thing.
Should be under the policy.
I don't care if it's your policy or not. I mean, it is. But here's the funny thing. If you pull up the Bradley County Policy, 1700, it's exactly the same. You pull up the Washington County Policy, it's exactly the same. Can you tell me that the needs of White County, and the needs of Bradley County, and the needs of Washington County are exactly the same? Or that by some miraculous set of circumstances, all three boards got together, and they decided what the needs of their system were, and they came up with the verbatim same thing? Of course they didn't. Because this is a ten set of goals that's in there as, as a filler to give you some ideas to think about. But it's not meant to be scattered. It's fundamentally the job of this board, informed by your director, to be thinking up here about, about this nice lady's grandson. And not your grandson, grandchildren. I mean, you got, you got grand, you know, grandkids that may be coming back here, they need to have a job, right? Who's gonna do it if it's not this board? And I'm gonna tell you, this board's not gonna do it. If you're drawn to the daily operations of the school system like a moth to a candle, if people call you upset about, I heard that this book was in the library, or, or I heard that this teacher did such and such, or what about the coach? He didn't put in the right quarterback. If, if y'all, and it's temptation, because that's, because the squeaky wheel, right? The squeaky wheel disagrees. You will be responsible to your constituents. And so the, the pole is like a kid, like a moth to a candle. You're looking at these daily issues and not looking at the things that only you can address. And because only you can address them, but you're sitting, you're looking at this, you think you're going unaddressed. And so Kurt, who, in my experience, representing in lots of districts, is very good at what he does, makes decisions that are driven by what he sees. But his window is, all right, I gotta, what, what is, what is your typical window? Like, what do you, are you, are you thinking about how to get through the school year? Are you already, are you already building next year's budget?
No. I mean, we're thinking about things as, as we're into that budget, but usually it's.
When do you start building next year's budget?
Uh, January, when it's first started talking about.
Okay. So, but here's the thing. How is he gonna build that budget if he doesn't know the strategic priorities this board thinks are important?
We just maintain.
That's exactly right.
We just maintain. We don't think for, we just maintain. Cause that's easy.
Well, well, and, and in absence, absent direction from y'all, that's all, maintaining is exactly what he's supposed to do. And occasionally, he's gonna see real issues, like the, like the statesmen said, say, you gotta do X, Y, and Z. And so he's gonna be proactive and say, hey, you gotta get ahead of this. Or he's gonna look at data, he's gonna, hmm, all right, we need to do this. And so he is thinking strategically, based upon day-to-day operational concerns. Because that's his silo. That's his, his job is to run the school system. It's your job to plan the system with his input. Make sense? Go like this? Go like this? Yeah. And, and so I, I suggest to you that if you are focusing on these things, your board meetings look fundamentally different. And I suggest, if you're thinking about these, and when someone calls you and says, I'm worried about the book in the library, your answer's gonna be, have you followed our policy? That's it. Have you talked to the librarian? Have you talked to the principal? Have you talked to Mr. D? It's a short conversation, because it's all that matters. Why did I elect you for? Well, you rep elected me to set goals, develop policy, and approve a budget. And at the end of the day, when you're asked to make any decision, any decision that comes before the board, and it doesn't align with one of the strategic goals, it's not your lane. It's just not. If you want to run the school system, or part of it, apply to be a principal. Make sense? So, let me ask you a final thing. Take a look at Mr. D's contract, section 18. So, performance evaluations. Within 90 days after the effective date of this contract, the board shall consult with the director. As the consultant with the director shall establish a performance evaluation instrument to be used in the assessment of the overall performance of the director, the director's progress toward, toward goals established by the board, et cetera, et cetera. So, y'all are contractually obligated to Mr. D to be doing this. And, and my thought here is, this is a wonderful opportunity for you all to really affect some long-term change in White County. Let's go back to, the school board is the leader. some long-term change in White County. Let's go back to, the school board is the largest employer, largest recipient of tax funds, and is a steward of your most precious asset, your kids. And you have the opportunity to communicate the values of this district, this community, to those kids, and to keep them here so that you have a thriving community for generations to come. But to do that, your focus has got to be on this type of stuff, high-level thinking, not the day-to-day operations of the schools. Y'all can do it, and only y'all can do it. Questions, comments, pearls of wisdom, or cries of outrage. Now, if you do this, you're going to hold this guy accountable, and, you know, hey. But, but he also has clear science about where he's supposed to go, what he's supposed to do. And I haven't met a superintendent yet who doesn't welcome that kind of accountability.
So, Mr. Bennett, when, when, when we put an agenda together, there's a lot of things in there that, that the board has to do. You know, we have to approve transfers and, and things regarding, you know, budget amendments and things of that nature.
Sure, yes, yes.
We have to approve volunteer coaches and things of that nature. So there's a lot of things on our agenda, if you go back and look, look at our previous agendas, that, that go into that. So, as, in what you're saying, that if we added then on top of that all this planning and follow-up and checking on how we're doing progression to that goals, then we can, you know, we're taking an hour and a half meeting, we're taking it to three and a half hours, conceptually, it could be. There shouldn't be any problem deviating from an agenda where you can compress some of those items into a consent agenda. If the board, if we do our due diligence of doing our homework, putting in something where, you know, that if we have all the information presented, basically to give ourselves time for doing the things that only we can do as a board.
Right.
That's, seems to me, being kind of the, trying to figure out the balance.
Yes.
The trade-off.
Yeah.
So, could you walk through that?
Absolutely. So, so to your point, state law does provide that as the fiscal agent for the school system, there are certain things that you are required to do. You approve budget transfers, you, you approve out-of-town field trips, things like that. And only y'all can do that. Those are vestiges of the law that predate the Education Improvement Act. It's funny, the journalist only wants you to be, you know, policymakers, but there's still some mundane things that you have to do. There's no reason whatsoever that those things can't be done on a consent agenda. Most of the boards.
I put it, there's our last agenda. I just put that up there for you to get an idea of, like, some of the things that, that we're doing. You mentioned consent. I don't know if some of those things need to be in the consent agenda, or?
All right. So, just looking at this, so consent agenda, you got to approve all the minutes. Golly, I'm looking at this, I'm not seeing anything. Everything down to here should be on the consent agenda. Budget amendments should be on a consent agenda. So really, what I'm seeing here is, everything is consent agenda, and this is consent agenda. Well, it's new business, but I would still probably put it on a consent agenda, honestly. The only thing that's not a consent agenda I would see would be committee reports, and district update.
But that goes to Mr. Howard's point about being able to be thorough ahead of time on, like, say, budget amendments and things, and have that information, be able to discuss that thoroughly ahead of time, so that when you come to a meeting, you know, that, that's been kind of, I think, your argument, I'm not going to speak for you, but that's been your argument, is that
Thank you. No, I'm glad you brought it up.
We're voting on things, you know, maybe tens, hundreds, or thousands of dollars, maybe millions of dollars, but if we haven't discussed them thoroughly, or the board hasn't discussed them thoroughly prior to this session, wouldn't feel comfortable having that as in the consent agenda item.
So, yeah, I mean, so, so to that point, if you're going, if you're going, let me at least where my sentence over. If you want to keep on keeping on what you've been doing, and you're satisfied with it, you can, you don't have to change your agenda. But if you want to elevate the board's discussion to these true, these true planning issues, where your, your time is spent with someone from maybe, you know, one of the state's economic development offices coming in and saying, here's what we see as being a growth opportunity for the plateau, and having them come and present on those issues. We're having someone from the county commission talking about economic development in White County, and, and focusing on, on those big-picture issues, and then you start, one of your committees takes that and runs with it. I, I don't know. You, you can do those things even in a workshop if you wanted to. But to do that, that's going to require the executive committee to get the consent agenda out to the board probably two weeks in advance, or at least a week in advance.
So then, speaking of that, talk about that executive committee. What should we, what's our obligation to the board members? What do we need to do for the board members? What do we need to receive from the board members to date back to, to director?
So, as a, for instance, so if you're, if you're meeting on a Thursday night, then the, the final, final agenda needs to go out to the board no later than the Friday previously, so they have the weekend to review it, and then that Monday to ask questions of Mr. D or the staff. And, and I think if you have a business week to review everything that's going to come, coming before the board, there's no reason that that shouldn't be on the consent agenda. And it may be that somebody's like, I, yeah, I understand it, I just don't agree with it. Well, then pull it from the consent agenda.
So you go through, you list what's in your consent agenda?
Yeah.
And this is going to pass on one motion unless somebody says, motion to pull this item out?
Yeah.
And then you add that to new business?
Yeah.
On the agenda.
That's exactly.
But then everything else can stay in consent, so everybody still has the opportunity, if they want to go into deeper dive on one, on a particular issue.
That's right.
But we can also work to streamline our meetings, and then give us the opportunity to add things again, that the board, that only the board can do, and get those discussions out in public, but have meaningful, meaningful discussions on it.
That's exactly right.
But what we need, but what we need to do, from what the executive committee needs to do, we need to figure out some way we can get that out prior, again, try to get enough, enough space for, before our meeting, to give the board time to.
Can I ask one quick question before you go? I went to a meeting at Putnam County one night, and we sat in on their meeting. They came in, they sat around their, their assigned seats up on the, up on their platform, and they used BOE Connect, which is a public fantastic.
Fantastic.
Which is, which is, I mean, I didn't, they were, I was there 15, maybe 20 minutes. They came in, they said, we'll take motion to approve this, this, and this, and this on the consent agenda. And then I made a presentation, and 10 minutes later, I was headed out the door going home, and I'm like, holy cow.
But what, but what do their work sessions look?
I don't know. That's.
That's what their committee, and that's what, I think you spoke to, again, when you speak, but you go to county commission meeting, they're much like that even, as well. I mean, they don't last 20, 25 minutes, but they have steering committee meetings that last quite a amount of time ahead of time. So, that's, that's what the board would have to consider, is that meeting. And right now, we're doing an hour prior to the actual board meeting, and it doesn't feel like enough time to really get into.
So, you're going to say something?
Well, I've been hesitant to even speak up here, because I have so good ideas also, I think that Mr. D has alluded on. I have a background with county commission, and I'm not saying that everything was done purposefully. I don't know the legalistic part of whether we can do things where the county commission does. Their work session is two weeks prior to their full meeting right there. So, I have advocated and tried to see if we can get, like y'all said, this information accomplished a full week, or whatever, before we vote on it, so we can have that time. We've already been through the meeting, we've worked through that, we can have that time to sit and evaluate it, and even maybe ask our constituents, and then come back and vote on it. So we're pretty well understanding, you know, how we're going to do it before we sit down, okay? I don't know if that's possible. Is there, is there a timeframe that we could?
I mean, you have, you have to be flexible to recognize that maybe there's a budget amendment, or there's an emergency approval for a rule that blew off, if you may need to add to the agenda.
Right, right.
But to your point, if, if your meeting is, is on the 14th, then the executive committee should strive to send out the agenda on the 7th, sort of the full business week, for y'all to chew through this. And, and if you have any questions, talk to them before, and maybe, maybe a workshop, if we have the week, maybe like, I don't want to hear about that, or, you know, I've got some questions. If there are questions, he can, he can send out the general answer and do his weekend updates. But you may not even need to talk about it in a workshop, because, excuse me a second.
I'm going to forget what I'm going to ask. Go ahead.
So, if meeting's on the 7, on the 14th, send the agenda out on the 7th, which means maybe your people, you know, in finance or wherever else, need to get it to you on the 1st, so, or whenever, that's an internal deadline for you, so you can chew on it and figure out, you want to send it to the chair, and then put it up to the rest of the board. But, but yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's fair for the board to have some time to chew on the agenda before we get here. I think if you see the workshops become a little shorter, or they're, they're tied to the strategic updates. Case in point, one of our clients has a 90-minute work session before the meeting, and most of the 90 minutes are filled with, with strategic updates. And then if there's any time left over, then they go through the agenda. We're usually going to learn through items, and they don't use committees. And it's a 25,000 student district. You got a question?
Well, I don't know if this is possible. And, and of course, it would make, my question would be, can you have two separate nights, two separate meetings on two different days? And, and of course, that would be extra.
You must live nearby.
Well, it could be extra work, something that the board would be interested in, and of course, it's a, it's a full, full vote there. But that was the scenario that I was trying to relay is, having a work session on two different nights, don't want our actual vote. Is that possible?
Yeah, it's possible. And I, and I have one client that does, well, I've got two clients that do that. They'll have the work session on a Tuesday, and the meeting on a Thursday. And they'll go through the agenda, and that's all they're going through, and they'll do the strategic update on the Thursday. And then their business, their consent agenda is, mixed item on this, on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, sat in, any discussion, called roll, and the discussions are in the process. You know what I'm talking about?
Because my, my desire, we're having some marathon meetings, and, and, you know, when you get here, by the time something comes up that you're wanting to talk about, and then emotions can be high, and then you're tired, and you already lost your train of thought, and you get distracted. So blah, blah, blah.
Let me just say that you can have two meetings. But I have another client that would be like, why do we have to meet? Because if you meet on a Tuesday night, and we talk about the agenda, on Thursday night, we're going to talk about the agenda.
Yeah, I'm calling it a work session.
Yes, yes. And that's, and that's what they do. And they gave it up, because they were finding that it wasn't actually shortening the business meeting, because people still want to, want to talk.
Yeah. I can make an observation. Our, our meetings are long, but I don't really think that they're unnecessarily long, because we really, I think you all are achieving a lot in that hour and a half, because in your defense, I don't feel like you've always had the information as early as you wanted it. And so we're spending the time in the actual meeting discussing and debating and, and going through the things that maybe if you had the information earlier, and you could have studied longer on it, and asked me questions, you wouldn't have to do that. Does that, does that make sense? It's like you're having to use the meeting time to do the study time that otherwise you would have had. So I think that's probably the problem we have, especially with budget amendments. You know, I don't get those a lot of times, and no offense to anybody, but I don't, I may not get them until Tuesday before the Thursday meeting.
Yeah.
And they come rolling in, and then I'd put them in there as soon as I get them. But unless you look at it Wednesday or Thursday before you come, it's the first time you've seen it, and that makes our meetings longer, or your meetings are, because you have to study it now and talk about it and debate it. So, that's, that's, that's an issue. I think, I think you accomplished a lot. I know they're long meetings, but I think it's because you're having to do all that study and business in that short amount of time, when we maybe could do that.
And the thing about budget amendments is, if this is too far, well, they do come out. They, they come in and they come out. And it, and it may be that some of these things, the executive committee doesn't, emergency approval, subject to board ratification, and they come in and they come in. But a lot of these things, particularly this federal program, the board just needs to have a, a level of trust in the executive committee for bringing this up, because what are you going to do? You're going to not pay, you know, something that everyone would require you to pay. So, you, you, you need to find your own rhythm for how you, how you do this. And then it may be that it takes a couple of months to try to get stuff out so here, so that your consent agenda becomes this big, and you're pulling one item. You're pulling one item for discussion, and everything's here, and you're pulling one item, and so everything else gets approved. And so instead of discussing 12 things, you're discussing one thing. And if that's what happens happening, you make progress.
And I think that's 99% of what we do. We do have late, you know, budget transfers and things like that, but 99% of what we do, especially if we had seven days in a row, we could look at that. We could view it in our drive. If we've got questions, shoot these two, and say, what's this about, or, um, 98% of that, we could put in that consent agenda, we can, and one thing may be get pulled off.
Yeah. And if one, one or two things get pulled, how long is that going to take?
Three months.
This could shorten the meeting. And if you do the BME Connect, which is a, I think it's a TSB, a project. Is it a little expensive? Yes. But here's the thing. It makes your job so much easier, because the administration loads everything on BME Connect, and as soon as it's loaded, you pull it up and you look at it. If you have any questions, you can look at the page. And you can update it in real time. You don't have to sit down and look at it.
It's, we're doing a Google Drive version of it right now, kind of a formant version.
No, it's, we're doing it different than what we're talking about.
Okay. But it's pretty much the same.
It's pretty much the same thing.
Okay. Well, then.
But they get it in real time, but like, that one probably sends notifications. If I put something new in there, it probably triggers you to know.
Yeah.
That, that one doesn't do that.
My problem really is, it would get a little, if you were to, if you were to do this, and this is, you know, it's such a two of you, it's the executive committee, but if you were to do this, it would be a month or two where it's herky-jerky, where, you know, you're telling, you're telling Chad, I really needed this last week, and so you need to train your people. There's a little herky-jerky. And, and at first, you'll have people who want to pull stuff, because they want to talk about it. But if you develop that self-discipline, I really think you'll have a shorter meeting. They'll be talking about strategic stuff. So, you can't, you can't legitimately say this stuff.
And the reason I brought BOE Connect is, we, being on the TSBA board of directors, we use that. And it's a little tough to navigate until you get into it.
Until you figure it out.
Until you figure it out. And then it's like, oh, wow, we just covered this much in this. And it's, it's really easy.
And then all the supporting documents are there, and, and they contract the votes.
But we're doing the same, I mean, basically the same thing here. It's just, you know, I mean, it works.
My, whatever system we use, if you move towards a consent agenda, it'll be weird. It'll be weird. And in fact, I've got one client that's using the consent agenda forever. In this past week, they, they approved the consent agenda, and like 30 minutes later, board members said, wait a minute, I forgot, I wanted to pull something, and I wanted to talk, you know. And so they went back, wrote a motion to reconsider, put it back on, and then talked about it, and still didn't approve it. But he, but he felt like the constituents needed to hear the discussion about why they were doing X instead of the other docs as Y as A. And so, I mean, there's some things. And so, I mean, there's some things that, that maybe you could approve, but you want to go ahead and let the board hear about it. So you, you put it underneath business because it's, it's just something the public needs to hear about. And, and you know, you may try this for, for two or three months and you're like, I don't like it. You don't have to. You can go back and do it this way. But, but what? What? What I'm telling with the consent agenda is it's a way to free up your time to your board meetings to focus on the things that only you all can do. If you want to do it the way you've always done it, you don't need my blessing, but you have to. However, however, the strategic stuff, you have to do if you're not doing it. So maybe you have the same board meetings you always have had and then once a month, you have a work session where all Mr. D does is he does a strategic update. You're still doing the same thing. The question is, the, you know, is there a more efficient way to do it?
I'm not trying to change, just change something I was gonna ask about here. We have discussed in the past about changing the director's evaluation platform, the wording on it, the questions on it and everything. Because you, you hit upon topics tonight where, and at Mr. D's defense and my demise, I've given him some bad scores. But I've also put a question mark down there, how would I know? You know, teacher, how, how would I know his, uh, how he handles with his teachers, you know? Why, why should I grade him on community, uh, his community search right here? When that's our job, you know, and, and how the community feels toward it. Do you have another platform to look at that would be better?
Yes, but, but it starts with you. You need to tell me what's important.
So, so Mr. D, if, if I, if I could, I just, I want to fill you in on this board. Cause they, they did appease me and this was back before Mr. Robinson's passing and my fault because I didn't pick it back up. But last, I don't know, June-ish or something. You know, we were looking at the, exactly what you're talking about here. Strategic planning, director's val- valuation. Neither one of those seemed like they were parallel in the way they should, the way policy.
That's right.
So the, so we had a, a, uh, one or two, I can't remember how many we had. Was it, it was two, I think. Asked everybody to come up here and we did this one. And we went through there and then we had, we had that pause for, for Mr. Robinson's. And, and so hadn't picked back up yet. But if the executive committee said, we're gonna change this agenda to where we are gonna try to condense that to give us time to come circle back to that. Unless any board member wanted to talk about something specific, pull something out or they get noticed prior that this is, we need to do this. We could use that time of our board meeting to pick back up on where we're, that would get back into that strategic planning and thinking. We're not trying to hide anything from the public because the public can come to us and they can call central office. They can call any of the representatives and say, and, and try to get answered. What did you mean by that? What was that about? And we could prepare ourselves to answer that. But one of the things on my tenure on the board is that it doesn't appear that we have, we have allocated the time to do just that. Now, what I'm, what I think we're in the, we're learning in this workshop is that we're not necessarily tied to that agenda.
Correct.
Everybody's comfortable with it and we can start creating space in there for us to do exactly what we can only do as a board.
If, if I may, can I change? Um, the address is in the King James. And with the exception of that, nothing's written in red. You can change it. You can still change that even though it's written in red.
Oh, the only thing that really has to be on there now is line 17.
Yeah. Essentially, you're right.
Line 17.
Yeah, yeah. The other thing that you have to do.
Yeah.
But you know, a couple of comments is, um, is the only thing that has, that's a good one. It's a good one. Um, so yeah, I mean, be flexible, but remember, your agenda exists for the board. The board doesn't exist for your agenda.
Sure.
And so you can, this is, this is a tool for getting work done. Your evaluation thing, I think, should be tied to the objective. So let's take the page where you were asking about teacher satisfaction. Is that how we do this? Based upon whether the teacher you know is happy or not happy or the teacher you, that you, that you heard about or what you've seen in the face book? That's a completely unreliable source. Instead, measure him on the basis of, are all the positions, or, or at least, are at least 95% of the positions filled uh, two weeks before the summer school? I mean, that's a good metric, maybe that's a good time frame. But, but look at it, and whether he's able to satisfy his positions. And then measure him on the basis of retention. Uh, how many teachers, uh, what, what percentage of retention do we have? What percentage of retention do we have for teachers aides? Um, what percentage of people do we have stay for their fifth year? Because if we lose people for their fifth year, we've invested a lot of time in someone. That's, that's a waste of investment. Keep people for more than five years, you might be probably not people. So there, there, it's not that, it's not that employee satisfaction doesn't matter. It's that you need to put measures to, to measure what we're talking about. Make sense?
Exactly.
That's what I, I was prepared about our committees. You know, I think we spend a lot of time, you all spend a lot of time in that re-read, reading a report. And I wonder how beneficial that is to your time. If you get a maintenance report here that you could read, could you gain some time back there? And it's something you want to pull out and talk about, obviously. But I think that's something that nobody needs to happen because it's on the agenda. We get, well, you know, it's continued. I'm sorry, I'm not saying, here's what I, I observe. Committee reports, but I get this as much information on weekly update on Saturday morning. And even that can be expanded to where that's covered there. And I mean, from a, from a committee standpoint, I mean, we've got policy that we all collectively work on before our regular meeting. So that's how that comes in. We move things, we have a policy meeting. And then if there's something, agreements, something from policy, it's going to fall board. It comes up, it follows up with that, uh, that, that timeframe. And we present them, but you know, maintenance committee, we don't really have a committee that's focused on maintenance. That's just what we get back from, you know, from, from the, from the district. Uh, T L N, uh, updates and things like that. Even that can be, could be sent out, you know, electronically. We can discuss if the petition came up. Um, but, uh, you know, that we should, might want to consider. But I mean, a lot of that stuff would really be condensed. It's not like, you know, we're not, we can't get to the information if, uh, we want to. But it would change the way the meetings flow. You know, try to, try to create ways that we can, in public, address the things that only we can do. I mean, I'm sorry, but you know, 99% of the people that we give a maintenance report, they, the public doesn't like care about that. They don't care if you can guarantee you're on that. I don't think, I mean, it's good for them to know if they actually know it. Like T L N, they don't, they don't care. It's good for you all to know, but I'm just saying, I'm not saying you don't provide that to the boards that you're in for. But, you know, we spend like, uh, the school report, yeah, the school report, you all read that. I mean, it's great to know the polls decided that after nine weeks test, you're gonna have a fake sale on Tuesday. But it's, it's just time that you're taking away from your meeting to do the things that you're talking about you want to do. I'm really, I think that, that you don't have to do, that it's good. So like, if you're recognizing, um, business, fourth grade class, grabbing, I mean, there's, there's, there's some, there are some things where you, the board, need to fly flat. You know, you need to brag on your people, your, your, your teachers need to understand that this board has their, like, facts, right? Where they're there, they're recognized and honored. Um, so it is, it's, it's fun, right? So it's, it's not saying that your, your board meetings, that you become all business, like, pledge meditation. Um, but as, as an example, our excellence, we recognize, uh, Mr. So-and-so, um, for a presentation. And then here comes So-and-so, it says, air across country, um, got a third of the stage. And then they come around, they shake their hand, they, they fuck back. You know, the, the, your own visitor's gesture, which is also a significant thing. Consent agenda. Because we talk about how levels, that would be a couple of comments. Or you can do a comment first.